Hello, everybody. Before we get going, we've got a little special surprise for us tonight. We'd like to welcome the Select Ensemble to come in. Come on in.
Hi, everyone. If you're able to, will you please stand for our national anthem?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And for those of us from this over in our country, we're going to assist the two more songs to him. Our first one, our favorite concert is a song called "No Room, No Room." Oh, you guys are sick shit now. Oh, there's no room, no room. There's no room. How appropriate, right?
No room, no room, o'er the fields, no room, no room, o'er the heavens, no room, no major bed, no room. Room, no room, no room, but there was plenty of room when the shepherds came, yes, plenty of room when the heavens rang with glory to God in the highest, and on earth should look to bear. Room, no room, it needed, no room, no room, o'er the heavens, no room, no major bed, no room. Room, no room, no room, but there was plenty of room for the wise and three, yes, plenty of room when a band did heave, they purchased gifts, brandy and scents, and hurries for the newborn king. Room, no room, it needed, no room, no room, o'er the heavens, no room, no major bed, no room. Room, no room, no room, no room, no room, no room, no room, nowhere he could lay his head, no place but a major bed, a major bed. No room, no room, it needed, no room, no room, o'er the heavens, no room, no major bed, no room. Room, no room, no room, no room, room, no room, no room, no room, no room, no room.
Everyone, wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday, and we're going to conclude our meeting for furnace and tech halls.
Check the halls with boughs of holly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Dawnly now our gay apparel, fa la la, fa la la, la la la. Troll the ancient Yuletide carol, fa la la la, la 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 la. See the glazing yew before us, fa la la, la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la la, la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure, fa la la, la 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 la. War the tale of Yuletide treasure, fa la la, la 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 la. Cast away the omea passages, fa la la, la 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 la. Hail the new year laughs and praises, fa la la, la 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 la. Sing we joyous all together, fa la la, la 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 la. Hear the sound of wind and weather, fa la la, la 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 la.
Yeah, that was great. Well, thank you very much for that. That was a great way to start a meeting with a nice packed house too, so everybody got to see it, which was nice. I guess we move on now, right? Student representative comments, please.
So, December 17th to the 21st is Battle of the Classes, and this is when each grade competes against one another to see who is number one. The battle takes place over five school days, culminating in a grand battle in the gym on Friday, December 22nd. Each event throughout the week is worth points. The profit from the T-shirts is used as the prize money. First place gets 50%, second place 30%, third place 15%, and finally, fourth place with 5%. Events throughout the week are as followed. Banners, plastic bag recycling, plastic bottle recycling, food bank donations for the Lacy Food Bank, hallway decorations, and finally, spirit clothing for each day. Monday being pajama day, Tuesday red, white, and blue day, Wednesday Lacy Day, Thursday your favorite holiday day, and Friday, Battle of the Classes T-shirt Day. There's also a winter festival that's in the works, which would be scheduled on February 22nd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And now I'd like to invite Logan Hammerly to join me by the podium. Logan Hammerly is involved in sports such as soccer and boys volleyball, while assisting the girls volleyball matches whenever he gets a chance. Logan is also active outside of school, throughout his church. He always comes to school full of spirit and takes part in every spirit week at LTHS to show his enthusiasm. When Logan arrives at school each day, he is ready to make his peers laugh while still being focused on his schoolwork. With his multiple, while in his multiple honors courses, Logan chose his full attention and keeps a good academic record of As and high Bs. Logan is always very willing to offer his assistance to other students in the class who struggle with the material. It is truly amazing how Logan remains so studious when he is so involved with so many other activities. This is why Logan Hammerly is our recipient for the Unsung Hero Award for the month of December. Congratulations, Logan.
Congratulations, Logan. Reporting superintendent is next.
Thank you, President Claus. Congratulations to Logan and, where did you go, Logan? Wait, there you are. Is your family here? Round of applause to all of them, too. Welcome. So I apologize to all of you up there who don't have seats, but thank you for coming out. I think it was excellent for the Select Ensemble to perform in front of all of you. I know they're really excited about it. I mentioned last month that I was going to ask Mr. Olender to join us, and he came through, so we thank him, and we thank the Select Ensemble. So another round of applause to them for an excellent performance. Before I continue with the superintendent's report, I would like to take a moment to discuss the recent loss of a very, very special person in our community. Mary Lou Smith died unexpectedly on December 7th. Tragic loss and a tough loss for the family. And so we, on behalf of the entire board, extend our condolences. I would like to invite retired superintendent, Mr. Rich Startob, to say a few words about Mary Lou, because I know that you probably knew her very, very well. Thank you, Mr. Startob.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Before I remember board member Mary Lou Smith, I would like to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and thank the Board of Education, each and every one of you, for all of your work. I want to congratulate Dr. Clark on her appointment to superintendent, and thank you for not leaving us. And I want to commend Hannah, Kelsey's not with us, on being selected as student leaders and coming to the board as student representatives. We were either the first or among the first in a state of New Jersey in the 80s, in the 1980s. You remember that, right?
Obviously.
To bring student representatives to the Board of Ed. So it's a lot of history, it's a very important position, and you're to be commended to be here tonight. My first contact with Mary Lou Smith was in 1979. She was the first elected mayor in Lacy Township, and we were at the groundbreaking ceremony for the new middle school, which is now Milpon. She was so excited about the withdrawal from Central Regionals' split sessions and the birth of our K-12 system. Her enthusiasm and her support was just as important as the footings of that new building. Fast forward to 1990. Former Mayor Smith becomes School Board Member Smith. The pay and benefits for board members was no different than it is now. Zero. Board Member Smith was a devoted spouse to her husband, Bill. Their two children, who are here tonight, Laura and Bill, who would, who themselves were Lacy Lions and would go on to marry two more Lacy Lions, Anthony and Jennifer, who gave us the grandchildren of Sean and Michael, two more Lacy Lions. All remarkable, great students and great citizens. As a board member, she was both an advocate for the students and a responsible advocate for the taxpayers. And she could hold her own with the tough guys on the board, and we had some back then. In fact, I often heard them say, "I think she's right." She valued the importance of teachers, staff, and administration in creating a proper school environment. She also understood that administration wasn't a dirty word, but was the result of massive rules and regulations mandated by Trenton. In 1990, our school district experienced five consecutive budget defeats by the community when we voted on the budget. And I was serving as the acting superintendent for the third time. Board Member Smith, with the consensus of the board, asked me to become the superintendent and work with them to gain the confidence of the community and pass defendable and properly constructed budgets. I accepted, after thinking about it a while, and joined the board in an effort, and I recall, the next five budgets passed along with the overwhelming majority for the remaining years. As a board member, she could not only take on the tough guys, but was a catalyst to get everybody to work together. Never once, never once do I recall of her speaking of her own accomplishments, but always using collective pronouns such as "we" and "our." A great example for all. In closing, I thought about what Board Member Smith might say to this Board of Education. I think this is what she would say. "Never forget, you may be a volunteer, but your work has a profound impact on the lives of our students and how this community and school system is viewed by those around us. Learn from your accomplishments and failures, and always look forward. Always serve with dignity and respect for the public, your fellow board members, the staff, and most importantly, our students." Finally, she would say, "Thank you for your service. Rest in peace, Lacy Lion Smith, and thank you for your service." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Startob. And I know the Smith family is here, so again, we express our condolences to a wonderful, wonderful woman. Thank you for being here tonight. All right. As I do at every meeting, I also wanted to recognize our two artists, Lenoka Harbor 4th graders Maggie Meekins for the adorable drawing on the left for our board agenda, and Hallie Salutki for doing the superintendent's report. As I mentioned, our students' artwork is hanging in the board office, and it's, the collection is starting to look really, really beautiful. So a round of applause to them for the performance. And Mr. Brandis, are you ready to present our Students of the Month?
I am, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me to speak again here tonight. It is one of the things I enjoy most about being principal is being able to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. I'd also like to wish everybody happy holidays, condolences to the Smith family, and really welcoming everybody here tonight. It's great to see board members, administrators, teachers, students, former superintendents, community members. It is, it is a special month, this holiday season. It was wonderful to hear the chorus, and I'm just really excited to be able to celebrate the Students of the Month for December. So, without ado, I'd like Haley Carskatten to come and join me, please. Congratulations, Haley. Congratulations to Haley and her family for being the Senior of the Month, and we're now going to watch a video of her accomplishments. Congratulations.
Hello, I'm Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacy Township High School, and I'm here with Seniors of the Month for December. First, I want to congratulate Haley Carskatten. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Jake Serrano.
Congratulations again on being Senior of the Month. So how's it feel to be Senior of the Month?
It feels really good. I feel really honored to have gotten this award, and it feels awesome that a lot of teachers think that I should get this award in the first place.
So what activities were you involved with throughout high school?
Quite a few. I was involved in, sports-wise, I swam for two years, and then I played tennis for three years, which has had a great impact on my high school career. And I've also been involved in a lot of clubs, such as Interact, where I hold a leadership position as president, and Student Government, where I lead as the vice president of my club right now, a few other clubs, and they've all just had a really great influence on my high school career as well.
What teacher would you say had the biggest impact on your high school success?
Okay, I can't really choose one. I do have to choose two. Mr. Cousin and Mr. Sotero have had a fantastic influence on my high school career. They've pushed me to push myself, and I've done things that I never thought I'd be doing in high school with their guidance, so I really appreciate them for influencing me.
Congratulations Haley on winning Senior of the Month. I cannot believe it took this long for you to actually win this award. You have worked extremely hard through your high school career, and you're finally being recognized for it. Could not be more proud.
What qualities would you say helped you succeed in high school?
Definitely being hardworking and just motivated to do my best no matter what, even if I end up failing. I think that's something that you really need to have going into high school, and yeah, just hard, hardworking.
What are you going to miss the most when you graduate?
Definitely the relationships that I've made with not only the students in the school, but the teachers. Honestly, it feels really good to walk down the hallways and say good morning to five different teachers that I just know personally from meeting them in different activities in the school. It makes me smile, and I'm really going to miss that.
What are your plans after our school?
After high school, I'm going to be going to college to study pre-medicine as an undergrad, and then in grad school, go to medical school and hopefully become a cardiothoracic surgeon in the future.
All right, congrats again.
Thank you.
Congratulations, next, I'd like Kenneth Horn to come join me. Congratulations. For being Senior of the Month, and now we're going to watch his accomplishments and his, all right, his interviewing style as we watch his video.
Hello, we're back here with Senior of the Month, Ken Horn. Congratulations, Ken. Here to celebrate Ken's accomplishments is Ken Horn.
Congratulations, Kenny, on being Senior of the Month. How's it feel being Senior of the Month?
It feels really good knowing that teachers think I deserve this award.
What kind of things were you involved in throughout high school?
I was in the STEM program for my first two years, which I dropped to become a part of the OCC Academy. I've played volleyball for the past two seasons. I'm one of the lead anchors for the school's morning news, and I'm also the assistant station manager at the school's TV studio.
What teacher's been the most important for your high school success?
Definitely Mr. Memmon, because he's been my favorite teacher to my favorite class this entire time. He's given me a chance to excel in a program that I think is great and given me a chance to be a leader, and something I love to do.
The first words I think about when we talk about Kenny Horn are hard work and dedication. Kenny really is just such a hardworking student, and he just goes above and beyond in every project he does, in every assignment he does, pretty much in everything that we ask Kenny to do. He's always coming up with new innovative ideas, and he doesn't just come up with the ideas, he actually implements them, which is really a big deal. I just can't think of a better honor for Kenny than to be Senior of the Month December, and congratulations. It has absolutely been a pleasure working with you over the last three years.
What qualities have helped you succeed the most?
Probably just being really dedicated to getting all my work done.
What are you going to miss most after you graduate?
I'm probably going to miss all the friendships I've made here.
And what are your plans after graduation?
I'm going to go to college for applied mathematics, and I don't know where I'm going yet.
Congratulations to Ken, and certainly, last but not least, Michael Barrett is our vocational Senior of the Month. We'd like to start right here.
Hi, we're back with Senior of the Month for the vocational school, Michael Barrett. Congratulations, Michael. Here to celebrate his accomplishments is John Kroll.
I'm here with Mike Barrett, December Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Mike. So, how does it feel to be Senior of the Month?
It's an honor to get this accomplishment.
And what have you been involved in throughout high school?
I've been involved in baseball, AP classes, and going to VOTech.
And what teachers have had the greatest impact on you throughout high school?
I would say Mr. Schwingdinger. He really pushed me to further my education.
Congratulations, Mike. You're a great student, you're hardworking, you always do your best, you're not afraid to take risks. Good luck with everything.
And what qualities have led you to be successful in high school?
I would say hardworking and determination and dedication.
And now, what are you going to miss most about LTHS?
I'm going to miss the teachers. I'm going to miss seeing all my friends and being able to go to VOTech every single day.
And now, what are you going to, what are your plans going in the future?
I'm going to be going to college for business administration, and then after that, I want to eventually own my own wood shop or cabinet shop.
That's awesome. Congratulations, Mike, December Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
Congratulations again to all the Seniors of the Month. And again, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy Holidays, and I hope you all enjoy this holiday season and the break coming up. You're an educator, most of you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandis. Appreciate that. Can everybody hear me? Yeah? Okay. Congratulations once again to our Students of the Month, Kenny, Haley, and Michael, and to their families as well. So one more round of applause. All right, lots of good... The preparation for these auditions is attentive and requires hard work and dedication to the art of music. This is outside of their normal studies for school, they're performing in multiple ensembles, and playing in sports, and the countless other activities in clubs these students participate in. It is my privilege as their band director to announce to you that all five students were accepted into these groups based on their auditions. Before I bring them up, I would like to recognize those people that support them and work with them to get to this level of musicianship, including their private teachers, my fellow district music teachers who have taught and influenced them over the years, and most importantly, their parents for their support. At this time, I would like to ask the students to come up to be recognized when I call their names and give their results. First, I would like to recognize sophomore Gavin Brennan for being accepted into the All-South Jersey Symphony Band on Trumpet. Next, unfortunately, our next student is unable to be with us tonight. He is at a track meet. Remember what I said about our students doing multiple things? Well, our next student, Zach Stroyn, he's a sophomore as well. I don't know where he finds the time to do everything he does, but he's fantastic at everything he does, and he's successful at everything he does. Zach has been accepted into the All-South Jersey Wind Ensemble on Clarinet, and for placing ninth on his instrument out of 50 who auditioned. So, once again, sorry to say Zach couldn't be here tonight. I know his parents are here, so... Next, I would like to recognize Junior Carly Zelman for being accepted into the All-South Jersey Symphony Band on Clarinet. Carly is the first chair Clarinet for the Symphony Band, which means she is the top-ranked person and has a top-ranked seat in that ensemble. Carly placed 10th on her instrument out of 50 who auditioned. So, next, I would like to recognize Senior Emily Brennan. Emily has been accepted into both the All-Shore South Jersey Symphony Band and Orchestra on her instrument for oboe. Emily plays third overall, and she is the first chair for her instrument in the Symphony Band. Last, I would like to now recognize Senior Theodore DeVito for being accepted into the All-South Jersey Wind Ensemble and Orchestra on his instrument, the bass clarinet. Teddy placed first overall on his instrument and scored 30 points ahead of the person who came in second. It should also be mentioned that Teddy was also accepted to the Symphony Band on the Clarinet, but opted for the bass clarinet seat instead. These students will be performing with all of the groups we were talking about in concerts at Rowan University on January 6th and January 13th. All five of these students are now eligible to audition for the New Jersey All-State Band in January, and will be up against students from Central Jersey Region 2 and North Jersey Region 1. We are very proud of these students for their achievement and their representation of the Lacey Township Schools. It shows how hard work, drive, lots of practice, and dedication to what you do pays off. I would like to thank the Board once again for allowing me to come before you tonight to share these great accomplishments. It is truly a privilege to be able to come to work every day and work with these students. Thank you, guys, and congratulations, guys. Thank you again, Dr. Clark.
I was thrilled to get that email, and I was thrilled to have Mr. Montague come out and talk to you about them, and we wish them well and lots of luck, so one more round of applause. All right, shifting gears a little bit, we have two guests from our community. Ms. Mize Cronin and Ms. Van Riper were so diligent in joining us for every single one of our back-to-school nights. You probably recognize them, they set up these beautiful tables, and they're so dedicated to what they do and to our students, and so we would like to have them here to talk a little bit about the services that the Ocean County Library provides, and I know they're going to talk to you a little bit about their website. So, thank you for being here, thank you for the partnership that you have with our school district, and I thank you for coming to all of our back-to-school nights, so...
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We promised we won't take too much of your time today. We're not used to large groups like this, so bear with... I see some friendly faces. Anna Mae Marcus is one of my preschool Storytime kids, so I feel like I've got a friend in the audience, at least. My name is Corinne Mize Cronin, and I'm the Youth Services Librarian at the Lacey Branch of the Ocean County Library. I'm sort of liaison for the elementary schools, and over the years, I've had the pleasure of working with many of the teachers and certainly the wonderful library media specialists... Hi, Mrs. Doffinger. ...that you have in the schools. And my coworker here, I'm Colleen Van Riper, I'm the teen librarian in Lacey. Can I talk like here, and you guys can hear me? So, I actually know some of the teens here, so it's very good. Not expecting so many people, so if I start chattering really, really fast, you know, just because I'm nervous. But yeah, I have a great partnership with the librarian at the high school. He's amazing. We run the summer reading committee every year. We pick 40 different books every single year, and it really comes to having a great partnership together. So, that's really what this presentation is about, what we can do to help out and give resources to the teachers, which is you guys here, really.
Yeah, so the Ocean County Library system, we're looking to sort of augment what you already have in place in the school systems, and a lot of these are things that we've been doing all along, but they've been compiled onto these webpages, which is the education initiative. And what we're looking at now is the educator resources page of our education initiative. So, we just want to run through these really quickly, and it's sort of to supplement what the school libraries can do, and hopefully we can come out and help with, you know, different things. The first thing that's on there is the library card. We are aiming to get every student and educator in Ocean County a library card. And to make that a little bit easier, there's now a link to get a library card online. You can just fill it out and stop in and get your library card, or you can also request that we come to your class, and we will provide library cards to your class. A week or two ago, we were at a class of fifth graders, and we showed them a database where they could download or borrow eBooks. And so, we went through that, and they all had their own library cards, so they potentially, like, the whole class could be reading the same eBook from the Hoopla database that we have. So, that's library cards.
And we also have this thing called Assignment Alerts, so you can let us know if the kids are going to be needing a book on something really obscure that we might not have in Lacey. We can pull from all the other branches, or it can be as simple as they need to read a mystery book, and we only have like some really old ones. Maybe we can pull more updated, more fun ones from other branches and have them ready for the students. As simple as that, even if it's just giving us a heads-up that it's going to be a lot of kids looking for certain books, it's just to help the kids, to help you guys, to help everybody.
And then exploring digital resources. So, we have a whole host of online databases that I don't think a lot of people know about. The library pays for them, you have to access them through the library's website. You can use them in your classes with your students, or you can use them to get curriculum materials. There are things like Explorer, Facts on File, Curriculum Resource Center, Contemporary Authors, Gale Virtual Reference Library. These are all databases that are accessible through the library's website, and many of them have printable materials for teachers for all different grade levels, from, you know, first grade up through 12th grade, and they sometimes include lessons, plans on all different subject areas. So, that's a really valuable resource, and sometimes they have links directly to Common Core, New Jersey Common Core standards, so you can hopefully find materials that way. What else, Colleen?
These are our most popular digital materials. We have, we talked briefly about Hoopla, which is eBooks, audiobooks. That Hoopla, you can have a whole class reading the same book, it's really great. We have Canopy for films, we have Access Video, it's for documentary educational videos, that's really great, and this all comes with different curriculums, you can go with the videos, and even Tumble Books for the younger grades are really great. You can read a book along with the video, they're really cool, and just a ton of different things we've got going on.
Yeah, and you know, if you have like an Audible account and you spend money on audiobooks, you can get those for free through the library's website, through eLibraryNGI, and through Hoopla, and there are many of them, and it's the same for eBooks. Okay, professional development hours we have on there. OCL has opportunities for free professional development hours through a couple of databases, Lynda.com and Universal Class, which offer hundreds of courses by vetted professors, and you know, obviously, you'd have to get approval for the continuing ed for the classes you're taking, but they're there, and the other thing that we have is a link to different library programs that offer continuing ed credit. Right now, there's one, it's called, I just want to mention this one, it's called Hidden Dangers: Keeping Children and Adults with Developmental Disabilities and Autism Safe in the Home, School, and Community, and it's presented by PoAC.
So, anything we have going on would be right here in the link, so you can always check and see.
Yeah, and that's on Thursday, January 29th at 6:30 in Tom's River, and that offers two hours, potentially, of professional development.
Roll on the same education page. And then we do have online tutoring. This is more for maybe the parents, or for you to suggest to your, some students that are struggling. It's called Brain Fuse. It runs from 2:00 to 11:00 at night, and it's live tutors right there. You can do different subjects, you can even do, it's languages, but there's only Spanish. I know German is really big in high school, so we're upset, there's no German, but there is Spanish at least, and there's, you can upload essays that they've written and just get help on many different topics. It's really great.
Yeah, if you're a parent who, like I, could not help my children pass like third grade with their math homework, so this is something you can utilize if they're struggling with a concept. It's a one-on-one tutor experience using, is it called chalkboard, the interface?
Yes.
And it's really, it's useful, and all the instructors have at least four-year degrees and they're vetted that are on there. And the next thing I just want to really quickly mention is we have STEM and Maker Kits programs that are available. We can bring them into the classroom. This is primarily for the elementary grades. We have robotics, coding, circuitry, and building kits, and you can contact us if you're interested in us coming into the classroom with those kits and just doing a presentation. So, what, did you have anything else we were going to...
And then, if you want us to come, talk about anything that we've talked about here. If there's this particular database, you guys want us to talk about more, we can come and do a visit. Our visit was pretty brief, we're not trying to take up your whole day, so it was about 20 minutes for, at Mill Pond, right?
Yeah, we did like a half-hour, 20 maybe, program at Mill Pond for the Hoopla database, at the request of one of the teachers there. But we can pretty much do anything. We're just here to support the school district and the teachers, educators, and students, and parents, and just remind you that the Ocean County Library is there. If you haven't been there in a while, stop in, you might see some things you don't expect to see, including some fabulous programming. And go onto the website and see all the fabulous electronic resources that are there that you may not have known about. You can access just using your library card. So, thank you so much for letting us spend a few minutes talking to you today.
Thank you so much for coming. So, as I mentioned, as Ms. Mize Cronin and Ms. Van Riper were coming up, so dedicated, and so many free programs. I still have my library card from a different county from when I was in fifth grade, and I just, I can't give it up, I just love my library card. So, I encourage you to bring your kids out, so many awesome programs. I had my niece, who was visiting from Nevada, over at the library, and we were there almost every other day, so just fabulous programs, and so supportive of our teachers as well. So, we thank them for joining us. All right, shifting gears again. At this point, this is the point of our evening where we're going to bid farewell to Board President Claus and Board Member Saletti, and thank them for their years of service and dedication to the Lacey Township Board of Education. As Mr. Startup said earlier, it is not lost on us that your time is completely volunteer, and you volunteered a heck of a lot of hours, and so we thank you for that. Mr. Giordano and I are going to go up and say a few words, well, a lot of few words, so bear with us.
This is the part where it turns into a roast. There's plenty of roast, I'm sure. You've got a couple minutes left. Hey, Tom. Yeah, you've got three minutes. So, I'll actually keep my comments short. You know, I've known Rob for the better part of 35 years, and Dave, working together for the better part of five, what, four, five?
Three.
Three, four, five, right?
It's a three-year term, Sean, it's a three-year term.
So, and you guys all know how much the pay and the benefits are for doing this, right? It's excellent, but...
The benefits are excellent.
You know, these guys, their hearts, their passion for serving the community was always in the right place, and you guys brought a lot of energy, enthusiasm, you're passionate about what you did, so awesome that all the teachers are here to send you off tonight.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Because I know that's exactly why you guys are here. But I was involved in many discussions with these gentlemen, and they care about you, they care about the people in the town, and they care about our students. So, with that, I'll let you read the resolutions, because they are lengthy.
Yes.
And I'll just stand here and hold the wall up.
All right, I'll trade places if you know.
Perfect.
All right, so I'm going to start with Mr. Claus. So, this is the resolution from the Lacey Township Board of Education. Whereas Robert C. Claus has served one term as a member of the Lacey Township Board of Education since January 2016, and whereas Robert C. Claus has always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which he has been elected by the voters of the Lacey Township School District. And whereas during his service to the Lacey Township Board of Education, he served as President of the Board of Education in 2018, and Vice President in 2017, has actively served as Finance and Operations Committee Chair, and has an active and contributing as a member of numerous committees of the Board, and always being available as an alternate when needed, and we've called you on many times. Whereas Robert C. Claus' professional background in leadership skills and problem-solving and analysis has been an instrumental factor in seeking out different ways to bring revenue into the district. And whereas Rob Claus has always displayed respect and an outstanding level of positive boardsmanship to his fellow board members with whom he has served. And whereas Rob Claus has always displayed fairness, integrity, and dignity in dealing with the issues presented to the Board for decision-making, and caring about what was most important to our district, and that is the students. And whereas Rob Claus... So with that, I'll let you read the resolutions because they are lengthy.
Yes.
And I'll just stand here and hold the wall up.
All right. I'll treat places as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to start with Mr. Claus. So this is the resolution from the Lacy Township Board of Education. Whereas Robert C. Claus has served one term as a member of the Lacy Township Board of Education since January 2016. And whereas Robert C. Claus has always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which he has been elected by the voters of the Lacy Township School District. And whereas during his service to the Lacy Township Board of Education, he served as President of the Board of Education in 2018 and Vice President in 2017. Has actively served as Finance and Operations Committee Chair and has an active and contributing as a member of numerous committees of the Board and always being available as an alternate when needed. And we've called you on many times. Whereas Robert C. Claus' professional background in leadership skills and problem solving and analysis has been an instrumental factor in seeking out different ways to bring revenue into the district. And whereas Rob Claus has always displayed respect and an outstanding level of positive boardman- boardsmanship to his fellow board members with whom he has served. And whereas Rob Claus has always displayed fairness, integrity, and dignity in dealing with the issues presented to the Board for decision-making and caring about what was most important to our district, and that is the students. And whereas Rob Claus was steadfast and never weavered in making decisions for the students of Lacy Township as his first priority. And whereas Lacy Township School District will forever miss such a strong advocate for children and friends of education. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lacy Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the Board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless thousands of hours of volunteer service to the students and staff of the district and the citizens of Lacy Township during his three years of dedicated service to the Lacy Township Board of Education. The Board does hereby formally acknowledge with deeply felt appreciation the time, effort, and sacrifices he made for our district dated the 17th day of December 2018. You don't want to do this? Okay. All right, Mr. Saletti. Thank you for your years of service. And here is the resolution for you. Whereas David Saletti served one term as a member of the Lacy Township Board of Education. And whereas David Saletti has always displayed dignity and respect for the position to which he has been elected by the voters of the Lacy Township School District. And whereas during his service to the Lacy Township Board of Education, actively served as Chair of Policy Co-Curricular Safety and Security LTSA Liaison Committee and as an active and contributive, contributing member of numerous committees of the Board. And whereas David Saletti's experiences in his professional life served the Board well as he had a passion for the safety of our students and a honed skill in asking powerful questions that allowed him to quickly create understanding, assist with problem solving, and gather information to be an informed decision-maker. And whereas David Saletti was committed to the negotiations process and dedicated many hours of committee work in meeting with the Lacy Township School District staff. And whereas David Saletti has always displayed fairness, integrity, and dignity in dealing with issues presented to the Board for decision-making. And whereas David Saletti was an advocate for students, ensuring that they had what they needed first, and was the voice of students and parents as he selflessly devoted his energy to making our schools better. And whereas David Saletti was keenly focused on the future of the Lacy Township School District and was always supportive of taking steps to move the district forward. And whereas Lacy Township School District will miss such a strong advocate for children and a friend of education. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lacy Township Board of Education, Ocean County, New Jersey, that the Board does hereby formally acknowledge the countless hours of service to the students and staff of the district and the citizens of Lacy Township during his three years of dedicated service to the Board of Education. The Board does hereby formally acknowledge with deeply felt appreciation the time, effort, and sacrifices you made, Dave, for this district dated the 17th day of December 2018. All right, before I make my final comments, I will talk about this again in January, but I'm going to ask our staff, since you're all here gathered tonight, and our families watching for some help. In January, we will debut a video series called Spotlight on Our Graduates because our graduates, whether they graduated a year ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, they have great, great stories. 30 years ago, they have, 35 years ago. They have great stories to tell. And we want to hear from them. So what I'm asking is that if you know any of these graduates, and I know you all, you all even up here know many of them, I am going to be working with Mr. Mermin to create a Dropbox of sorts where our, our graduates can send us selfies, videos, because we know that we can do this in this day and age with so many different apps and software. And what we'd like to do is feature our Spotlight on Graduates at every single board meeting for as long as we can because we have lots of graduates telling great stories and we want to hear from them. So I'm asking you to reach out to them, find them, tell them what we're doing, and I will be sending out information as to how they can get that information back to us. So I, I thank you for your help. And I, I just bumped into somebody at ShopRite the other day because that always happens. You know how, what it's like. And this one, I was talking about this idea and the parents said, "Oh, my daughter's, you know, graduate from NJIT and she's doing great things. Will Rapsis is a recent graduate and he's jumping out of airplanes now." So I know he's interested in sending us a video. We saw him not too long ago. So the more the merrier. I want to get as many as possible because I know our graduates are doing amazing things. So I'm going to end by wishing you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, a Happy and Healthy New Year. Enjoy the break and we'll see you all in 2019. Thank you, President Claus, for allowing me to make comments.
Sure. Thank you very much. Okay. And now we move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. We've got a lot of people here. I'm expecting there to be something. It's gotta be one.
I'll talk quick like I do. Hi, Regina Descends of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. Congratulations to the Students of the Month and the Unsung Hero and all the new members of the National Honor Society. Very sorry I was not able to attend their induction ceremony this year. Tonight it was time to say thank you to Mr. Claus and Mrs. Saletti for their three years of service to this Board of Education. We spent many, many, long hours together in various meetings during my previous term. And now we all know and understand how difficult and demanding it is to be a board member. I'll never forget the night we saw a few sparks come out of a light fixture in the back of this room. Mr. Saletti walked up the stairs very calmly. We were in a panic. And he stuck his hand in the light fixture while climbing on a chair. And I was like, okay, it's nice to have a fireman in the house at all times. We will miss that, but we have Mr. Riggs as backup. So on January 3rd, it's my turn again. Mr. Riggs recently attended his first county school board meeting on December 6th, and I think he is now only one requirement short of completing the new board member certification by the New Jersey School Boards Association. Mr. Horvath and I attended a new board member orientation last Wednesday hosted by Dr. Clark and Mr. DeGeorge. I must say it was an excellent meeting. We received a handbook with a wealth of information to help us get started on January 3rd, and I thank you both. Last Thursday, I know I missed a concert, but I was at a township committee meeting. Mr. Quinn was honored for his nearly 20 years with the township, and he started here on the school board many years ago. I promise I will try to do my best to be present for student events as my time permits. As many people may have heard, the Lacy Education Foundation received its 501(c)(3) determination letter from the IRS on November 27th. It was a proud moment for Mr. Palladino and I since we had gone to the post office that day to take my name off the PO box and the clerk handed us the letter. I thank the volunteers that have emailed us since the news article and letter. The LEF trustees are meeting tomorrow night and hopefully we can get off to a running start in January. I've already sent out a few donation request letters. It is our sincere hope that the Education Foundation will be a leap forward for student achievement in this district. I have patiently waited four years to get this operation underway. While I can no longer serve as a trustee, I can be a volunteer for the Development Committee whose job it will be to procure funding. If any parent or resident works for a company that has a foundation or a corporate giving program, please obtain the name, a phone number, and an email address for the company and send it to the Education Foundation at lacyef2018@gmail.com. I have a lot of resources that need to be researched as well. The money is out there, we just need to get it donated here. Some companies do not give to outsiders, thus the need for corporate contacts if we can get them. If anyone wants to discuss the future of the LEF with me, my number is 609-693-6454. And my personal email is r-e-g-d-i-s-c-e-n-z-a@hotmail.com. I thank everyone so much and happy holidays to all. And my thanks again to the voters for giving me the opportunity to serve this community again in 2019. Please attend the Board of Education Reorganization Meeting on January 3rd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Thank you again. Please be careful. I'm sure this isn't...
Good evening, Dr. Clark, members of the Board of Education, and my esteemed colleagues. My name is Merrill Costa and I am an educator for the Lacy Township School District as well as a resident of Lacy Township. Over the past few months, you have heard some emotional pleas from my colleagues expressing their sadness and dismay that has hovered over our district this past year. I'm not here to rehash what has already been so eloquently brought to your attention. Let's suffice it to say that we left our classrooms in June without a contract with the faith that things would work out, as they always do. As professionals in good faith, we attended summer workshops. As professionals in good faith, we returned in August to prepare our classrooms. As professionals in good faith, we reviewed curriculum and prepared lesson plans. As professionals in good faith, we returned in September, still without a contract, yet we remained professional. Our faith was tested when we learned that there had been absolutely no headway on contract negotiations throughout the summer and that we would start the new school year with no sign that there would be, though there were words of encouragement. Rest assured that we, the Lacy Township Education Association, are not here to demonstrate an us versus them mentality tonight. No, we are here to thank you. To thank you for returning to the table. To thank you for working side by side with us to hash out an amicable agreement. And to thank you for signing a memorandum of agreement. We, the LTEA, are here in good faith, having done our part to ratify this agreement. Tonight, we want nothing more than to move on past this contentious time and return to the business of education. When asked how his businesses are so successful, Richard Branson made clear: loyal employees are assets, not liabilities. We hope that tonight you will remember that we, the Lacy Township Education Association and all its members, are valuable assets to Lacy Township School District, to the community of Lacy, and to the children of Lacy Township. The LTEA proudly stands in good faith.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate your comments. Any other folks? No? All right, well, thank you very much. And I won't miss it this time. On to board member comments. Mr. Riggs.
Thanks, thank you very much, President Claus. Hey, really going to miss you. Nice to get to know you. It's only been a year. Same thing as Dave down the line a little further. Pushed that a little further out. Really, guys, it was great to get to know you. I came in this from a weird angle. I know nobody knew me when I walked onboard, but you guys were great from the beginning. And so going down the line, we're going to continue the trend. Our changing dynamic, as you know, it's going to be a little different next time you see us in January, but we're going to do the same thing. We're going to open our arms to whoever's coming down the line. I don't know, interesting experience up here. I can't say I'm not envious of you. Like all those awesome Monday nights you got to yourself and everything now, but thanks for everything you guys did down the line, really. And to, to talk about the schools too, I don't know, I come here month after month and I'm always sort of floored by the talent that comes through. Like you saw the Select Ensemble before and what the band is up to. You always hear the little snippets about what's going on in the different schools. You know, too often we get hung up on, you know, the one, the one bad thing that everybody wants to talk about for months and months on end, but there's so much good stuff that happens like every day, every month in this place. Like everyone's got their own angle and it seems like they're allowed to, I don't know, go with it. Like everybody's allowed to be who they want to be here. I enjoy what I see when I come back here month after month. I'm glad I wore the appropriate colors for tonight. I think I fit in with the group. I hope you guys are still going to come back next month and hang out with us in January and everything like that, but we all doubt it, right? Everybody's going to go. Looking down the, looking down the donations, Lacy Football Foundation, that quarter million dollars for the, for the lights, that, that's something that's going to go for a long time. I mean, it could... And Kim, I know you were big in that, so congra- thanks a lot. Thanks for everything you guys did. So that's it. I don't have too much more. Happy Hanukkah to everybody who celebrated and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and see you guys in January. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Give her a roundy.
My turn. First of all, Dave Saletti. Great, great times the last two years I've been on the board with Dave. Spent a lot of hours, different committees, negotiations. Like Vanessa, Dr. Clark, I'm sorry. Like Dr. Clark said, very hardworking board member. Spent a lot of hours away from the family, like most of us do, all of us do. I'm going to miss you. Going to miss your thoughts and your reasoning and I always need someone to reason against me, huh? Mr. Claus, I'm not saying anything nice about you. Mr. Claus and I think Mr. de Blasio second this. This was supposed to be one meeting a month and it didn't turn out that way, but no, walking aside, Rob, your leadership the last two years made me grow, I believe, into a good board member and you were a good mentor, so I'd like to thank you. And I'd like to thank both families of these two. Listen, we, we spent a lot of time away from work, away from the family. I missed a lot of things, but I, you know, it, it's a lot of time consuming, but it's well worth it. Get a lo- I get along with everybody here. I do, thank you. And I, it's, it's, it's great working with Dr. Clark and Mr. DeGeorge and the rest of the staff at the Board Office. And we really do appreciate the teachers, the staff here. Whether you think or not, we did spend a lot of time in summertime trying to hash out this contract. It's just a long process. You know, I've been on your side also in my former career, so, you know, we can't just worry about teachers and staff. We have to think about taxpayers and all. But I think we came up with something that everyone's happy with and, you know, a few disagreements, but we hashed it out and we got it here before the, the New Year, so. I'd like to congratulate the Students of the Month. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, safe and healthy New Year. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, safe and healthy New Year. And Kim, great job. I know you thought it was gonna take a little longer, but you got it done. You, you were pushing for this year and you got it done, it's a great job, so. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
My turn. Okay, can, yeah, it's working. Okay, first of all, to the Smith fam, Mary Lou's family, my heartfelt condolences to all of you. I just saw your mom the week before in ShopRite and we were, just a little history, when I first got on the board, a couple of years ago. Mary Lou was actually, was actually sitting on the board when I first started and she took me under her wing and everything Mr. Startup said, every word, every adjective he used was your mom. She was, she was the peacemaker, she was tough as nails. And there were some tough people on that board back then and she stood up to all of them. She's a great lady and you know what, she did exactly what Rich said tonight. When I was leaving in ShopRite and we, we were both scurrying, she said, "Thank you for all you do for the kids of Lacy." And I thought, wow, he really nailed it tonight. So my heartfelt condolences to all of you, she was a great woman. Congratulations to all our students of the month tonight and our unsung hero and our South Jersey students. A lot of you may not know what goes into all South Jersey, I have a musician in my family, so I sat through all these auditions and it is very, I don't think I could do it, it is very trying. And so congratulations if the students are still here, kudos to you because that is quite an accomplishment. And good luck in your next auditions. The play, Little Women, I don't know if any of you got to see Little Women, but it was wonderful. I got to attend, I think it was Friday evening show, and very good, good acting, very good. Sorry, can't see without them, can't see with them. All right, Rob and Dave, I, I can't tell you, two, what, two finer gentlemen that I've worked with over these years. Their sense of humor keeps us laughing, their dedication primarily to the students of this district is, goes without saying. We're gonna surely, surely miss both of you and I hope and pray that somewhere down the line you decide to try and join us again because you deserve to be here and we're gonna miss you. So thank you. And thank you too, like Nick said, to the families, because we did take a lot of your time away from them. And Kim, my goodness, if you ever want someone to raise money, ask her to come join you because a phenomenal job, thank you. Thank you for everything you did. And last but not least, everyone have a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Stay safe and enjoy your families and to all the servicemen and women, you know, across that are not gonna be able to join their families this Christmas, you know, our love and heartfelt thanks to them as well. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, Linda.
Listen, I just wanted to say something really. The parents of these children sitting over here, you, you've done a fantastic job because they have sat there the entire time, they have not made, raised a thing. You can leave, we're gonna vote yes on the, on the con, you, you can take those kids home, all right? Just please, take them home. They've seen enough, you can go, you did a great job, you can leave. I have to say that, I've been sitting here watching them all night and I know my kids would have been bouncing off the walls, so if you wanna go, we, we understand you. Go right ahead, we'll wait. That's really all I wanted to say right now, if you want. This poor guy wants to leave.
Hey Dave, am I allowed to leave too?
We're all done after this. Goodbye, goodbye. Poor kid.
All right, Mr. DeBlass will continue here.
Sorry. Yeah, my son is in this district and if you think he's anything like those kids, you, you deserve every cent you get or you're gonna get. Trust me, he's like a little me, but he doesn't know how to control anything. You're in for it. You, you laugh, but trust me. I, I said the other day, he was in my school, I run a jiu-jitsu school and he was like screaming in the back, like he got in a sometimes he, I don't know what he's mad at, but he was mad. And the students were waiting for me to calm him down and I was like, listen, he wakes up every day, like he fights for a cause and he's ready to die every day. So it's just not worth the battle. Anyhow, yeah, it's, I was, this is the first time I've, I've, I've been intimidated in a long time. You know, I came out, I see all these shirts, I'm like, what's going on, you know, but it's good to see everybody here. And thi, this whole board thing is new to me, so it's good to be here and not have people like it's weird because sometimes the public comments when people walk up, they mean mug you, you know what I mean, like they they make eye contact with you and, and I'm like, wait, like what's happening right now? I feel very uncomfortable, I don't, you know, and it's his fault, it's Rob. You know, I, I told him before this started, I said, listen, man, I'm busy, like between the last board meeting and this one, I was in Costa Rica, Singapore, Norway, I'm all over the place and I'm like, listen, I'm very busy, like, no, he's like, listen, just one meeting a month for like an hour. How are you gonna lie, like he looked me in my eyes, you know? But, you know, I'm thankful that I'm here, you know, and I'm thankful, i, i, it's pretty cool, you know, and and you guys definitely don't ever think that you're not appreciated. I was a school teacher for a few years when I, when I graduated college and it's such a hard job, man, and no matter how much you make, it's still not enough, that's for sure. You know, like you deserve so much more than you get, so much more than you're gonna get and we need you, you know what I mean, like as simple as that, we need you, you know, the kids need you, we need you, so thank you for all you do, you're very appreciated. Thank you to Rob, Mr. Stiletta, I, you know, you guys are awesome, made me feel comfortable and you're gonna be missed for sure. And I didn't know Mary Lou, but she sounds like a beautiful and amazing woman, so condolences to your family. And congratulations to all the students of the month and everybody else who did amazing, great things. The singers were, I was, I was watching them sing and I started like, I went into like meditation almost and then I realized that the camera was, was directly on me. So I was like, all right, I gotta like fake smile now, so I started. I was really appreciating them, I swear. So thank you guys again and I, I hope you come back again. That's it.
We have to make sure he runs again in two years. Don't let him, don't let him go. Mr. Giordano?
I figured we'd let him go.
You're gonna let him go last?
Yeah.
So thank you, President Claus, I guess it's the last time I get to say that. You know, just going back to what I said before, these two gentlemen gave tireless, tireless hours away from their family and they truly do care about teachers and students. You know, I think something special is to be said when you grow up here and you're a part of this community. And I know that's why you did it, I know you wanted to give back because you care, it's, you're a lion, I'm a lion, it's, that's the reason why you do it. And, and Dave, you know, to you, it's that same feeling. It's you bring y, y, your energy and your passion and the professionalism that you have in your field and it showed and I'm gonna miss you guys. I'm gonna miss working with you, gonna miss your leadership. I'm gonna miss you as well, Dave, and everything that you brought to the board. It's a humbling experience growing up here, going to school here, running for election here and, and coming back and being a part of working with all you guys in the audience, the teachers. Like you, you're the spokes in the wheel, you, you, you know, you're where the rubber meets the road. You, you're, you're the, the, the energy that makes this district happen. It's, it's your passion, it's your lifeblood, it's, it's your dedication to teaching that makes a difference. So I, I just wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you for being here and thank you for being who you are and being dedicated to this school district. Try to count how many times they say um when I speak and I don't think I'm doing that bad right now, but I can't quite follow up the comedic act that Mr. DeBlass did. That's like mojo that you just can't, that's good stuff, my friend. It's a tough follow-up. To the seniors of the month, Ken, Haley, Michael, Logan, congratulations, job well done, you guys represent your classmates and you're the best at what you do. The Select Ensemble, I mean, that was, that was beautiful, I, I didn't quite get into meditation, but I was very relaxed. Regina, thanks for making your comments short tonight, I really appreciate it, they weren't as long as they normally are. Soon you're gonna be back up here again, so. Looking forward to that. We, we may actually pass a, some kind of policy that limits the amount of time. Phil figured that out, we'll figure that out. The library, I was actually shocked to see all the good things that our library has to offer everyone in the community, right? For free, so that's awesome, it's awesome to see that there's that, the working relationship between schools and the library, that's, that's fantastic. Keep that up. And with that, I will stop rambling, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a happy and safe and healthy New Year. And once again, thanks for being here and all your red shirts. It's really, it's really awesome to see, I, like you said, Mr. Riggs, please come back out for the January board meeting. We would love to see you, thank you.
For Mr. Dave Stiletta. Dan Stiletta.
Thank you, President Claus.
I love listening to this guy, by the way, so I look forward to these parts of the evening.
First of all, let's, let's get the formalities out of the way, the students of the month, fantastic job as always. Haley is a family friend and she works for my wife in a, in our before and after care here and she's a great kid and I'm sure the other kids are awesome too, I just don't know them personally. Thanks to Mr. Olander and the chorus ensemble, all South Jersey band, Gavin, Zach, Carly, Emily, and Theodore, Zach Strawn's here now, so he missed the, he missed it before. And thanks to the Ocean County Library too, it was fantastic. I, I just wanna say congratulations to Regina and Frank Horvath for their election win. Unfortunately, it came at mine and Rob's expense, but you know, things happen. Yeah. I, I, I wanna thank my family, especially my family for putting up with me not being where I'm supposed to be sometimes. My daughter had dance tonight, I couldn't get her there and I had to rely on someone else, but I appreciate my family for that. All of our supporters, Rob and I supporters who voted for us and helped us run, I, I wanted to thank them. Current and past board members, everyone that we've had the pleasure to sit up here with, it was, it was an experience for sure. And, you know, backpacking on what Tom said here, sometimes you do get mean mugged and, you know. You certainly don't sign up for that, but you hope, you know, we, we're all up here, we all hope we're doing the right things for the right reasons and I think 99% of the time we, we are. I wanna thank Dr. Clark and Pat DeGeorge, it was fantastic working with them over the years. I'm glad Dr. Clark is where she's sitting now, it feels like she's home and, you know what? She's, you've got a great leader here, a great leader. What else did I wanna say? You know what, there was three years, I was on the board for three years, some would say it's a long time, some would say clearly Linda Downing would say that's peanuts, nothing. Clearly, three months, that's like a month. But you know what, there were, there were a lot of great times here. When I first got on, I said to the people that sat in the room here, I said, you know what? Think of the positive stuff that's going on here, talk about the positives, let's talk about the positives. You know what, I'm gonna send a dare out to everyone out there on social media, before you post something negative, try and post something positive. Do that first, all right? Clearly, there's gonna be negativity, there's negativity everywhere, but there is so many good things going on. Just tonight's a, a small sample set of what happens here on a daily basis and it starts with the teachers and the students and the staff and the faculty and administration. There's a lot of great things going on here and I, you know what, I'm proud to be a part of it. I wanna thank everybody who put me in this position three years ago and, you know, got me to this moment right now. I can tell you one thing, there was a ton, I could think of a ton of things that were fantastic, things that happened here, but the one thing that sticks out for me, and it just said it so much about the students of Lacy, this previous high school graduation, we had a student who had a brain tumor and he missed his high school graduation and these kids got together and they threw another graduation for him. We did it right here in, in the cafeteria and it was awesome, it was something to see, I have pictures in my phone from it and I tell people, you know what, that's something that I never saw anywhere else and it was awesome to see here and it was all because of our students and the caring people in this town. And that was the main thing that sticks out to me, among other things, there was, you know, basketball games, football games, there were theater stu, you know, plays and chorus and my kids, the things that they were involved in, all that was great. But that's the one thing that I think probably sums up what I've seen here over the three years was the caring from everybody to come out, make sure, just kids showed up with their, their gown that they just wore two weeks earlier and they said, hey, you know what, I'll do it again and it was, it was a sight to see. So I wanna thank everybody, I wanna thank you for allowing me to sit here for three years and I appreciate it and I am humble and I just wanna say thank you and I'll say good luck to Regina and Frank and the rest of the board moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stiletta, Mr. Dan Stiletta.
Dan Stiletta.
That's, that is honestly one of the things I'll miss, out of many things, is when, when Dave takes off the glasses and just starts to riff. I enjoy listening to that. So yes, real quick, congratulations to all students of the month, like every month, we're proud of you guys. We appreciate all the hard work and the good name you bring to our school and the Select Ensemble too to come in and sing. I noticed too that we were sitting here looking right at the camera, so. But it was very interesting, very entertaining to listen to and we enjoyed it. It would be nice to start every meeting with something like that, you know. Yeah, that'd be a good idea. So, you know, when I look back at the past three years, when Dave and I first started this, we really didn't know what to expect. We too were told it was one meeting a month, I just want you to know that. For all of you guys. It was as much effort as you, you wanna put in, but apparently we wanted to put in a lot. Did enjoy all the meetings, some of them got a little, little tight, but some, most of them were good. We always loved when we had everybody come out and visit and, and watch the good things, that's what, we wanted everybody to see the good stuff. But, so like I said, we didn't know what to expect, but I, just a little tidbit, I was thinking today about the things that happened. Some of the stuff that we've been able to influence over the years. You know, we started out with a brand new BA, you know, our, our 30-year veteran had left and we were all starting here brand new together. We brought on a new superintendent and then promoted our assistant superintendent, who's not allowed to leave, by the way. You got 20 years ahead of you, easy. We brought in many new administration folks, special ed, the athletic director, all kinds of stuff. A new sup, assistant super that'll be starting in a few weeks and I'm disappointed I won't get to work with him, but I know he'll do well. I'll come visit him, maybe. You know, we were able to keep the budget kind of even through three years. We dropped down a little bit and came back to where we were three years ago. During that time, we were able to hold on to the cafeteria with that, you know, there was conversation about outsourcing that, maintenance, transportation. We were able to hold on to all of that within budget, we replaced a boiler, that was a lot of money, we got a gym floor coming. So all these things that we had spent a lot of money on while being able to keep the budget under control, under control for the most part. Class three officers, all kinds of, of good stuff. I'll tell you this too, if it wasn't for everybody on this board, including Pat. I'll tell you this too, if it wasn't for everybody on this board, including Pat and Dr. Clark, Nessa, the, the students and the faculty here are definitely safer than they were three years ago. We've done a lot of work to make sure that, that took place. In my mind, the icing on the cake, I talk about it all the time, is the OCC Academy. I, I just think it's incredible that kids can leave Lacey with a sixty-credits associate's degree, walking out of school here. I will miss that this year, that's something that we won't get to enjoy while you guys are up on stage, handing out. I don't even know how it's gonna work. Oh, yeah? You'll find me a spot? That'd be awesome. Yeah. But, you know, we always talk about how it's for the students, and it really is. I think it was Sean that told me that the icing on the cake was the being able to sit up on the stage and hand out diplomas and, and watch the kids. Some of them are excited, some of them are afraid, some of them don't know what to do, they already got their hand out, ready to shake before they get there. Most of them just don't wanna trip, you can see that too. But, it's exciting to see that, you know, and the, the future they have ahead of them. So, I guess, you know, in, in going out, I just wanna say that this, one of the things we've learned about this Board of Education is really not a place for individual agendas or, or looking back at something that's happened in the past and being angry and wanting to come in here and correct it and all that. When you run for Board of Ed, this is the place where you come to contribute and make things better. Here I go. I'm, I'm gonna miss it, I'll say that. In the end, happy holidays to everybody, and hope you enjoy it, Tommy and your family. All right, so now we're on to new business. Now, before we do A, one through, one through nineteen, I would like to make special attention to number six. There's something important about that one. Not sure what it is, but you're all here to hear it.
You wanna table that?
Yeah, you wanna hold on to that one for another day?
We'll get you back here next month.
Go ahead, you can throw stuff at him. Okay, can I get a motion for A, new business, so, one through nineteen, please?
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes, and just a little about number six. First of all, I'd like to thank your, your negotiation team. We spent a lot of time this past year haggling things out. I'd like to thank the whole board, specifically Dave, Dave was with him and myself, we're the negotiating committee, but I'd like to also thank the board, because know why, right from the beginning, when we started this contract negotiation, we realized guys were underpaid, we said it throughout the meetings, and we knew it wasn't gonna take one contract to make it right, so hopefully this is a start, and hopefully your next contract negotiation goes well too, but, you know, we, we really, really appreciate your service. All of us have kids go through the system. Mine's first year of college, he loved being here, he loved his teachers, he loved everything about the school, so, well-deserved, your contract. Like I said, it wasn't too much of a fight, there was just some things that we had to, we spent summer time together, so, there was just a lot of things, you know, like, like I said before, you know, we want what's right for you guys, we want what's right for students, but we also have to think about taxpayers, so, it was a little contentious, nothing nasty, nothing nasty at all. And I hope you're happy, because we're happy too, so, happy holidays, and I vote yes, again.
Thank you.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes, long overdue, yes, thank you.
Mrs. Downing?
Okay, I have to abstain on bills, number nine, five, zero, four, five, zero, bill number nine, five, one, six, nine, nine, and bill number nine, five, three, five, seven, nine, from the list of bills. I also unfortunately have to abstain from number six.
All right, there was seven, oh, geez.
Due to the ethics law, I cannot vote, because I, I have a conflict, but I want you to know that you are worth every penny of this contract, and you are, don't ever think you're not a valuable asset to this district, because you surely are.
Yes, on all the others. Sorry, I almost forgot to vote.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, 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 yes. Thank, thank you, guys. Thank you for hanging in there, and thank you to Nick and Dave for, and the negotiating team on your end. I said it before, I say it again, you guys are, you know, what makes this place tick, so, we appreciate you a tremendous amount, and we hope that this contract shows you thank you. Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes, I have to abstain on item one, five, eight, five, six, oh, to perceived conflict, but otherwise, yes on everything, especially number six. Congratulations, everybody, we got through it, Mike told you we would. Like Nick said, next time around too, we'll get through it again. I won't be here, but somebody will do it.
Thank you.
But yes, otherwise. Is that everybody? Did you get everybody? Yes, I'm trying to find the next one now, where am I? Okay, so B, donations. Before we go too far, I just wanted to point out a little bit, I know it's been mentioned a few times, but under this section, there's a really big number here to the right, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from the Football Foundation. Yeah, a, a quick note on, on, just on the Football Foundation, I like to bring this up all the time.
Speech?
Yes, yes. Speech, speech, speech. This, this donation is one of many from the foundation over time, so keep them in mind when they come looking for donations and whatnot. It all comes back to the school, but this is a big one, so, can I get a motion on B donations, please?
Move. Second. All right. Anybody wanna call out?
Yeah, everybody.
Yeah. I'll give a minute, I'll leave.
Mr. Saletti, happy with that? Roll, please.
Mr. Riggs?
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes, and again, Kim, thank you for all your hard work, and there's an all the big number here too, for the wrestling equipment installation, thank you.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes, and I'm sure, Kim, a couple of those dollars are mine.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm gonna vote yes, and thank you for all the donations, and Kim, I think Sean said that's never happened before, we're this much of a donation, so thank you again for all your hard work.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, to all the donors, and especially the Football Foundation, great job, thank you.
Mr. Claus?
Vote yes, but I, I guess I have to abstain on the Football Foundation, just a perceived conflict, but yes to everything else, and also, like Nick said, the wrestling too, there's a, there's a nice number in there as well, for the wrestling equipment, so, thank you for all of that. Is everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. C, programs and curriculum, can I get a motion, please?
I move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
D, professional days and workshops.
Second. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes. Certificated personnel, one through eleven.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes, again.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
I'm gonna vote yes, except for number eight, I have to abstain.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
F, non-certificated personnel.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes, congratulations on the retirement.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, and congratulations.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. George, do we have any walk-ons this evening?
As a matter of fact, we do.
Thank you.
We have two. Walk-on number one, entitled reinstatement of staff member. Motion reads, move that the board, at the recommendation of the superintendent, reinstate staff member number five, zero, four, nine, five, zero, effective retroactively to December tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Move. Second.
Roll call.
Hold on one second. Now. Mr. Riggs?
Yes, and welcome back.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Saletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Second. Termination of staff member. Move that the board, at the recommendation of the superintendent, terminate staff member number eight, five, six, four, one, six, effective January eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Riggs?
Abstain.
Mr. DeBlast?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
For the last time, Mr. Saletti?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.